Often that railcar is in Los Angeles, so they'll truck it to El- to San Bernardino, Ontario, Fontana, Paris, and then they'll transload it, and then a truck will pick it up.
If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. If you are wearing a hat, please remove it, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can we get roll call, please? Thank you.
And for the record, Commissioner Neimeyer is absent.
Thank you. Okay. Today, let's see. Agenda item number one, conditional use permit PCUP dash two four dash zero zero one two, to allow for the establishment of a sign program for a multi-tenant commercial property located at one five two three East Main Street, APN number zero one eight one dash eight five one dash two six dash zero 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 within the commercial zoning district. Who will be presenting?
That would be myself. Thank you, Chair DeLucas.
Thank you.
I do want to forewarn, we did have someone confirm they would be present for this item. I'm not seeing them quite yet, but they are supposed to be here. It's actually going to be a local representative for the property. You'll note that the applicant for the CUP itself is the architect who put the site plan together, or excuse me, the rendering together. I'm gonna go ahead and dive into my item, but I am hopeful that the representative does make it in time. As noted, this is a...
Should we switch the two items?
Entirely up to you. Honestly, I'm kind of wondering if they're thinking it might be a 7:00 PM start, so I'm gonna try to send a quick message and let them know. So if you wanted to swap it.
Okay. I would think that might make some sense.
No, that makes sense.
Second that vote, yeah.
Yeah, right?
Is there a special announcement, just something? I just go ahead and say?
No.
Let's go ahead and switch the items.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and switch over to item number two, pending active part, local participation. Just a timing issue, everybody. Okay. Action item number two, conditional use permit PCUP dash two four dash zero zero one zero, to allow for the establishment of a diesel truck repair facility at the property located at two nine five five Lenwood Road, APN number zero four two one dash three one three dash five seven dash zero 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 within the commercial zoning district. And who will be presenting on this one?
That'll be myself. Thank you, Chair DeLucas, and thank you to the applicants. I'll save you guys a couple standing minutes. If you wanna sit, I'll get through this, and then they'll call you right back up. Thank you. All right, so as noted, this is a conditional use permit to allow for the re-establishment of a diesel truck repair facility, and I wanna emphasize the re-establishment portion. You'll see under site information, the address includes twenty nine fifty five Lenwood Road, but it also, I wanted to reference twenty nine fifty three and twenty nine fifty seven, because in some of the site photos, you'll actually see all three addresses. I wanna make sure to differentiate, this is a single parcel. Following the last time a conditional use permit was brought forward for this same use at the same location was back in 2018. Planning staff at that time didn't realize the confusion that addressing out there was causing. It's a pretty big facility, so you have, I wanna say, four parcels in total of pretty good size, but multiple addresses on there. So that's the reasoning for the multiple addresses on this particular staff report. Like I mentioned, the planning commission reviewed a conditional use permit, most recently in 2018, for the same use. It was a diesel repair facility. The applicant we have in front of us this evening is looking to re-establish that use. The reason that they are in front of you this evening is in the Barstow Municipal Code. There is a stipulation that should a conditional use permit be approved at a property, but the business license for that use lapses for 12 months or more, it prompts the need for a new application. So the last tenant that was there vacated the property in 2021, or excuse me, 2022, and has a business license that's been expired for over a year. But I do wanna highlight that this exact location in this particular repair facility has been operating as a diesel repair facility since 2013, and prior to that, as most of us know, the site was constructed, excuse me, and long utilized as a terminal for the business Yellow Freight. The adjacent building to this facility is also a repair facility. They have been encouraged and approved in this area, as it is to the west of Interstate 15, reducing interactions with autos and other congested areas of our Lenwood area. I won't go too much into the aesthetics. As we all know, this location used to be utilized as a trucking terminal for the business Yellow Freight. Again, the building has primarily been used for diesel repair facilities. The applicant is proposing no exterior changes, however, future modifications will require notification and review by the city's community development department, excuse me. You'll see within the site plan, there are five highlighted parking stalls. That's about what the average utilized for this type of business has been at this location, but the site as a whole has a vast amount of parking stalls, so should their... The frequency of customers or the capacity of customers coming through increase, they do have the parking stalls to accommodate that. But in the site plan, you'll see the five that they foresee to be utilized day in and day out, but they do have the amount to meet honestly whatever amount we needed them to have. Emergency access, of course, is required to be maintained at all times. No fences, walls, or screening are being proposed at this time, however, with all of our submittals, future fencing or wall installations are required to comply with Barstow Municipal Code. Landscaping is existing and it's limited to the street frontage, my goodness. No interior landscaping is provided, nor does staff feel it would be cost-effective to provide any. The code, however, does require that landscaping and irrigation be continuously maintained. No additional lighting has been submitted as a part of this review. Signage is not being proposed per the site plan, however, any future installations for signage will require a separate permit and review with the city's community development departments. Access to the site is primarily via two driveways along Lenwood Road. The northernmost is the main entrance, as well as the diesel truck entrance. The southernmost driveway is limited to automobiles and auto parking lot. No additional driveways are proposed nor required. As this is a developed site, there is no grading being proposed, nor is it required. However, should it become necessary, that too will require a separate permit and plan set. As this is a developed site, utilities are available, and any future utility improvements will require a separate permit and plans. The overall lot size and configuration does meet the commercial zoning district requirements. I do wanna point out that this site is zoned as a commercial in the currently approved zoning and land use element. However, we do have an industrial overlay in this district, so this particular facility has actually been utilized for more industrial uses versus commercial, both in recent and past years. Beyond that, that covers the gist of the overall staff report, and if you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, um, any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Brandt.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. So our last couple applicants that came through, as far as fencing, we required them to put up screening. These were already, one was a pre-existing fence, and then like JB Hunt, that's gonna be a new fence going up. They're looking to get, or require screening too. So considering this property has been there for quite some time, it's already got fencing up, but where does that fall, where we're picking and choosing on who puts up screening and who doesn't?
Screening typically comes as a requirement when storage is being proposed. This applicant is not proposing storage. The actual repair facility is all enclosed. They're gonna be working off existing bays, everything like that. So the screening stipulation has most commonly come from the planning commission when there's storage involved. They're not proposing any outdoor storage under this application.
Okay, so, you know, as far as these repair canopies, I guess, so these vehicles, I mean, they're gonna be sitting there at any point in time where it's gonna be created as a storage? I mean, you see what I'm saying? It might act as a dual part. That's the only reason. I was just trying to check to make sure.
Understood, but...
We're not asking for one company to do it and another company not.
Yeah, so if you recall, both the screening requirements, both were for JB Hunt. Both were for the trailer facilities and just the storage of the facilities, so...
One for Ellis Fence.
Correct, but it was JB Hunt trailer storage, not the Ellis Fence proposal. So because that particular parcel was planned to be used for trailer storage for JB Hunt, similar to the one we just reviewed last two weeks ago, that's what prompts the requirement. Most historically, I guess I should say, the planning commission has been very adamant that if there is storage, they want it to be screened from public view. But I do wanna point out the condition that we have in regard to auto repair businesses. The very first comment under the planning department does call out that per the Barstow Municipal Code, section nineteen point sixteen point zero three zero, auto repair businesses are required to operate wholly within the enclosed building with no outdoor storage or display permitted. Violation of this code section could result in notices of violation and revocation reviews. So in all honesty, the business should be making their due diligence to make sure that if there are any trucks within those bays, that they're at least bringing them into their enclosed building before the day is over.
Okay, all right, 'cause just reviewing this, it looks like there's only two enclosed bays, right? And the rest are all open?
One of the buildings they're using is enclosed. The other bays that they will be using, yes, are...
The fourteen are open, the two are enclosed, okay. So just, you know, just so you guys know, I mean, that's kind of our deal up here, okay. The other thing too, parking, I know that was one of the issues with the last applicant that moved from, I believe, out in that area to his, or he's gonna be moving to his new location, so it came down to parking. So being that there's plenty of parking out there, and we're only requiring, I guess, five parking stalls, are they, is your guys' company gonna start doing repair? I mean, you're doing repair, but are you gonna start doing truck sales, or, you know, basically like a retail?
That would require your approval. For one, we're only proposing the repair. So if they wanted to modify this CUP at a later time, they, if it prompts a modification to their CUP, if that use prompts it, they would be coming over to you all for that approval first. So right now, the main focus is gonna be just what they put in their application, the repair of the diesels. However, for parking, they're not required just five. They located the five because...
Five per thousand feet?
Yeah, so that's gonna be the stipulation for this type of use, but like I mentioned, it all comes down to what the formula of the use is. So you're right. This particular use and the one we reviewed a couple of weeks ago, similar. However, the difference is, these folks aren't requesting for a parking reduction because they have enough spaces to meet it. The last one was requesting for a reduction by you all.
Okay, and then another thing I probably have for Chris, but I haven't been to Yellow Freight since probably my dad worked there, a long, long time ago. So a lot of things kind of are previous non-conforming, but is that place, considering the facility's very much more than 5,000 square feet, does it have the fire suppression system it needs in there? Or is it previous non-conforming, it doesn't need it? How does that work?
It actually has fire sprinklers inside there. It had it previously at the previous tenant, Yellow Freight. And, but the only difference is, is they used to have booster tanks that used to sit on the outside of the fence on the south side of the property, and I believe they removed those. But whenever the new operators came in, we made them tie onto Golden State Water, and Golden State Water's pressure is enough for them to meet the standards of what they need. Even in the front building, it's designed for high piled storage, which is the worst hazard you can have, and they meet the gallons per minute per the design of the California Fire Code. So they're actually pretty, they had to repair everything and bring it up to the standards of today, but yes, they did all that already.
Good, okay, thank you very much. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you for your guys' investment in Barstow.
Thank you, Commissioner Brandt. Those were really good questions. If no other questions? No? We'll go ahead and, go ahead and open up a public hearing. Do we have anything?
We have no speakers for this item.
Okay, do commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, do you guys have anything to bring to us that you wanna say, or Genesis got them all taken care of? Okay, good.
Okay. Well, that being the case, we'll go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. Any discussion amongst ourselves?
I'd like to make a motion.
You wanna go ahead and make a motion? Go ahead.
Okay, so I move to approve conditional use permit PU, PCUP dash two four dash zero zero... Oh, well, actually, sorry, okay. Let me get these correct, 'cause we swapped, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so yeah, so fix the conditional use permit number, so PCUP dash two four dash zero zero one zero. Is that the correct one for this one?
Yes.
Okay, all right, since we swapped, it's only a couple of numbers off, but anyway. So based upon evidence presented at the hearing, as well as findings and conditions contained in the staff report, so I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay, can we get a vote, please?
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Planning's commission's actions can be appealed within five business days. The appeal period ends at close of business day on September third, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could interject on that appeal date, my apologies. That actually is going to be close of business on November the fifth. Sorry about that, thank you.
Didn't even notice that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Are we good to proceed with agenda item number one? Yep. Okay.
And I could kick it off, Mr. DeLucas, if you wanna save yourself the repeat.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Again, I will be presenting this all as Mr. DeLucas said earlier, this is a conditional use permit to allow for the establishment of a sign program for a multi-tenant commercial property located at fifteen twenty three East Main Street within the commercial zoning district. This is a pretty straightforward conditional use permit. As you'll see within the comments, as, and I'm sure as most of us have noticed, fifteen twenty three East Main Street recently welcomed its newest tenant IHOP a few months ago. However, with the size of the building and the areas that aren't being occupied, there is a second tenant looking to come into that building. The second tenant, Fuzzy Taco, will also be occupying the remaining vacant portion of the building. IHOP signage went up recently following the city's completion of their signage permit and plans, and Fuzzy Taco would also like to install business signage on site. Per the Barstow Municipal Code, specifically our section covering signs, advertising on a single building for both businesses requires that a sign program application is applied for. A sign program can only be executed through a conditional use permit, so that's exactly why you have this in front of you this evening. The purpose of a sign program is to provide comprehensive review, address specific signage needs, and the establishment of sign details and locations for multiple businesses in a single project. You'll see within the site plan, there's the rendering showing the existing IHOP signage and what's being proposed for this incoming second tenant. There's really not too much on the site analysis here. As noted, this location recently opened with its newest tenant IHOP. Prior to opening, site improvements such as landscaping, new signage, various interior, and various interior upgrades were completed under approved City of Barstow building permits. The, excuse me, there are no fences, walls, or screening being proposed. Again, landscaping was recently cleaned up, replaced, and modified on this site. Just like all of our locations, this particular site will be required to maintain clean landscaping at all times. No additional lighting has been submitted as a part of the review, and no lighting is being proposed on site. The applicant will still be required to submit a separate permit for review and approval for all signage included in the site plan right in front of you. All future signage installations shall be subject to a separate permit review and approval by the city's building and planning departments. All signage shall comply with both Barstow Municipal Code and the conditions established under this piece, this conditional use permit this evening. Again, this is a developed site, no grading or off-site improvements being proposed or required, and the overall lot and configuration meets the zoning of the commercial district. Again, a pretty straightforward item. They're just looking to get approval for this additional signage, and with this approval, it allows staff to take in a building permit application for this proposed additional signage. So I am gonna keep it short and sweet on that one, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Commissioner Brandt, go ahead.
You guys wanna take one first, or you guys good?
You were on there first.
Yeah, okay. So a couple of quick questions. I went over to IT to see if they could pull this up on the screen. Genesis Greenway, you could pull this up for the public to see?
It's up right now. I just need them to turn it on.
Oh, so what, so what the public's seeing is not what we see, or...
What I'm pulling up is the agenda that's posted to the public. So when this shares, you're gonna see a taskbar at the top. I'm accessing the same agenda that was published to the public.
Oh, okay. No, what I'm saying is, so what the public, if they're watching in right now, they could see this?
Once it gets pulled up on the screens, yes.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Hearing sucks. Sure, one more hearing needs. All right, we'll just wait. There we go.
Ah, come on, nice.
Okay, so, good, so I'm glad, thank you very much for putting that up there. So a quick question, I mean, as far as Fuzzy Taco, I've never heard of him. Are they like a franchise? Is this a new...
That's gonna be a question for the applicant. I don't have those details.
Are you here for them, Gene? Okay, well, I mean, we could wait to talk to Gene. Just, is there staff questions, or can we ask Gene? Staff questions, okay. Well, yeah, I probably got more for the applicant, but, okay, staff-wise, considering the parking spaces over there, I mean, I know it's never been a problem in the past because we've had Sizzlers, an array of restaurants over there, but being that Tesla's going in there, is that gonna hinder any parking? Is that gonna be any kind of an issue space-wise? And then going down to the square footage per thousand square feet needing X amount?
It's a separate parcel entirely, so that parcel is two parcels away from this particular location. We would only be evaluating the parking at fifteen twenty three East Main Street. Tesla and this particular project are night and day. They don't interact at all.
Okay, so Tesla's staying solely on the west side of that property? Or those, those multiple properties down there, but more towards the movie theater and the gas station? Opposed to on the opposite side of Burger?
The vacant, the vacant area. The vacant area between Barstow Burger and the gas station.
Okay, so construction's just making it look like a hot mess down there right now, kinda?
I can't speak to that, but for this particular item, the parking at Tesla and the parking at this location, they don't interact at all.
Okay, all right, good, that's all I got. All right, yeah, so I just got stuff for Gene, you know, when we get to that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brandt. Any further questions for staff? No? Okay. We'll go ahead and open public hearing. Do we have anybody?
We have no speakers for this item.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Hello, my name's Gene Battici, and I will be representing Fuzzy's Tacos and IHOP. So if you have any questions, for those that know me, I'm very familiar with that property.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brandt, did you say you had some questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering if Sizzler's coming back?
All right, go ahead.
No, we're good. Okay, so Fuzzy Taco, is that a franchise? I've never heard of it, but like I said, I haven't been all around the world, so...
Fuzzy's Tacos is a franchise. It is a sister company of IHOP. Currently, Fuzzy's is for the most part in the Midwest and Northern Texas. So this would be the first location coming to California.
Awesome, okay, well, that's good. Well, I'll take back, you know, thank you for their investment. That's really, really cool. So how is, what's the makeup of it? Is it gonna be kind of like a Chipotle's, like what, is it?
I, I'll be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not very familiar with the menu itself. Much of its business is, from my understanding, is takeout. They're building a completely separate, as they did with IHOP, build a separate kitchen. They will be doing the same with Fuzzy's. There will be a prep kitchen in the facility as well. And also with Fuzzy's Tacos, it will have a bar in there as well.
Oh, cool, okay, all right, well, that's good for Barstow. Okay, yeah, so that's all I had. I was just kinda curious, 'cause it doesn't state that in here, but just kinda wanna figure out the makeup of it, 'cause I mean, you got some pizza places that are like Piology, or a Subway, where you kinda build a taco or Chipotles, something like that, but this might be something where it's just a grab and go?
No, I think probably something closer along the ways that you are speaking in regards to, you know, with tacos or like Chipotle, where you, you're able to decide exactly what, you know, they'll have the base, and then you decide on the customization.
Okay, so it's right there, visible, and you just build it as you go down the line, kind of cafeteria stop?
Again, I'm not overly sure on that part.
Okay, all right, cool. No, but that's good, that's good. That's all, that's all I've got. When, when are they planning on getting this sign up? When are they planning on going in there?
As far as for the timeline for the sign, I couldn't say at this point. Having been somewhat involved with the franchisee, my guess would be that once the COP is approved, that probably, again, my guesstimate, within 48 hours, I'm sure that they will have the permit application into the city of Barstow.
Okay, all right, good. Well, thank you, Gene. Appreciate it. Thank them too, so, whoever they are.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Brandt.
Yeah, looks pretty straightforward.
Okay, may I get a motion, please? Okay, uh, may I get a motion, please? Oh, you know what? I am so sorry, we declare the public hearing closed, and with no, well, well, that was the, the public speaking part, and, um, I'm assuming no commissioner discussions at all? Okay, now, may I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve conditional use permit, PCUP 24 dash zero zero one two, based upon the evidence presented at the hearing as well as findings and conditions contained within the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Can we get a vote, please?
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Planning Commission's actions can be appealed within five business days. The appeal period ends at close of business day on?
November 5th.
November 5th, 2024, thank you. Okay. Um, let's see here. Do we have any last standing public comments?
Uh, yes, we do, uh, John Williams?
Go ahead, sir, welcome.
You guys are going to be opening a seat, right? Maybe two seats or whatever's going to happen, so when you guys do your interview, interview process, and I know it's done by the council, it's important that ethics is something we're looking at. I'll give you an example, Mr. Rodney Brand Jr. filed some charges on me. Then, those charges were not accepted. One of the reasons why is the witness said that I'd never said the words that I said, how can you guys sit with an unethical person like Brand? How can we sit there and deal with a guy who fraudulently made a complaint, who lied? This is the kind of guy we're going to trust, this is the kind of guy we look forward to. It's the same guy that's, you know, why is he bringing up past fence companies? You know, that's, that's the past, it's not, it's not the present. Now, you shouldn't be discussing those issues, I know, go ahead and smirk, go ahead and give me a dirty look like you did last time. Those kind of things, I, don't talk when I'm talking, you be quiet when I talk, okay? It's my, it's my time. Why'd you do it? Why'd you make the false complaint? Think about what, what you tried to do. You know, you got investigators came in, police department came in, everybody came in off of something that you said, they trusted you. This, the witness had to say, no, it didn't happen, but you did it. Now, if you're a coward and you're afraid of me or whatever, just say that, but my intention's never to harm you in any way, it's just expose for, for, expose you for who you are, a liar. You can't afford this kind of stuff, guys. This, this, this is the kind of stuff that's not good for our city. I wanted to come tonight and tell you that to your face. I'm also going to be doing a little live show on that whole subject, police report and everything. You're a sad man, I feel sorry for you.
Thank you for the support again.
Do we have any, anybody else?
That is all the speakers we have.
Okay, thank you. Um, Planning Commissioner comments, any last remaining comments?
Um, yeah, we've got, uh, we, um, what are we doing, the six-minute thing? You guys got anything? I can go last.
I personally don't.
No? Okay, um, okay, so, uh, considering we've got two applicant, or basically two positions coming open for the Plan Commission, how is that going between, I guess, Marybell, Genesis? Have, have we been getting applications? Huh?
You, you, this is your time, I'll answer when you're done.
Okay, all right, so yeah, just kind of wanted to know how many we got so far, um, and just to verify, um, the application process is going to be open through November 6th, I believe, so, uh, myself and B. Lent, we, we're, uh, our terms are both up here at the Plan Commission, um, so those are the seats. Um, so I know I went to the city council to, uh, advocate, help recruit, uh, get the public to know that these, uh, uh, these positions are available and they're open, um, so that way it kind of gets out to the public a little bit better. Um, so a couple of other things, uh, Halloween's going to be coming up, uh, we've got Halloween, um, here in the next couple of days, and, uh, are we doing, uh, we're, we're doing a trunk or treat here at the city for October 31st, I believe, at three to five, a trunk or treat up here at the city of Barstow, so I mean, you guys could speak on it after the fact, um, so I didn't, I didn't take notes, I'm kind of just freewheeling here. So, um, the other thing is, uh, okay, so First Avenue Bridge, um, it looks good, I mean, it's, you know, the road's been flattened out, the asphalt's been repaired, um, or brought up two grade to mask the, uh, the gutters, curbs and gutters, different things like that, um, so the one thing that I was kind of curious about being that we have been taken off, uh, the task of, uh, Traffic and Safety Committee, um, when the city of Barstow wound it up buying some properties on First Avenue, they, uh, acquired the corner of, uh, White Street and First Avenue, and that right there, um, used to have a street light, and that street light is no longer in service, or I, I don't know what the case is, but it kind of, uh, you know, we had lighting prior to the bridge, now we don't, um, in that area, and that's on the west side of, uh, First Avenue and White, and, uh, on the opposing side, where, uh, there is a bus stop, um, or the old bus stop, because I guess it got moved up towards, uh, um, a li- little closer towards Main Street, but, um, there's another street light that is not illuminated, if not even there, I think, so that's on the, uh, the east side of, of First Avenue. So in that whole area of, uh, First Avenue and White, it's, uh, it's, it's kind of dark and, uh, both east and west side, we don't have any illumination over there at night. However, um, the bridge turned out really good, it's well illuminated, um, it's, it's pretty smooth, um, looks good, works, and, uh, so those are, those are a couple of things I had, and then just choose, just to kind of clarify too, because these are things I've caught at night, just being in the area, but considering, you know, building and safety, all the staff and everything, they operate during the day, so to catch streetlights at night, um, I was just kind of curious how you guys go about doing that, if, if it's not brought up through maybe the street committee, traffic and safety, wherever that, uh, got integrated, so those are a couple, couple of questions I had. Um, so, you know, the other thing though, getting into Halloween, um, one of my favorite times of year, so it's, uh, it's, it's very fun for the kids, and just wanted to, uh, just, you know, uh, mention to everybody, just try to be safe as possible, I know Rimrock and Barstow Road is, uh, there's a lot of traffic, there's, uh, not much visibility up there, it's dark, but there's going to be a lot of trick-or-treaters up there in, uh, college heights, so, um, just kind of be prepared for that. Um, any trick-or-treaters that are going to be trick-or-treating, try to get them some kind of, uh, glow sticks, flashlights, so they're seen, and, uh, you know, uh, and have some fun, so. We got a couple more things, um, I wanted to address, I think, I think that, that should be it, I'll cut it off at the four-minute mark, and, um, but if you guys can answer those questions, um, if, you know, anybody took those down, I could reiterate them again, but, um, those are kind of the questions that I had and comments, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brandt. Is any responses for Commissioner Brandt?
Yes, so his first question was regarding the Planning Commission application process, um, to this day, we haven't received any applications.
Yes.
And, uh, the next item was the trunk or treat, the city is going to host a trunk, trunk or treat event, we are actually going to be closing the streets out here, um, we've got like CHP, the, the sheriffs, the, uh, libraries coming out, so we ha, and then some of the departments are also going to be setting up some booths and handing out candy for the kids, and that is from three to five PM on, um, October 31st. Um, another, uh, thing that you brought up was in regards to the bridge, I did want to let you know that we are planning a ribbon cutting for November 14th at nine AM, uh, the details are still being worked out, but once we have, um, the event and the agenda for the day, we'll pass that information along.
Terrific, terrific, okay. Um, and then, yeah, maybe Chris on the, on the lighting, something like that?
So the, the two questions that I recall was, uh, are, White Street on East and West Side, uh, first, on First and White, uh, I will go down there and look at the streetlights to see what the deal is. Uh, the second thing is, is how do we, how do we ever, uh, find out since our jobs go till 5:30, uh, our work hours? The, we usually get notified by the Contact Us app, uh, everyone can use that app, it's, it's basically us, it's called a CRM, um, and if anyone wants, they download that and they take pictures of things, they can send it all into the city, and it gets assigned to any department that is, is relevant, so if you have a, if you say in your thing, you know, in the drop-down box, Police Department, you put in their, their information, and then you write your complaint, it gets sent over to the Police Department. And so if you write in, uh, something about streetlights, or engineering, or building department, it goes to those, uh, respectable departments, so that's, that's how that works. So, or people can just call us and say, the streetlight's out on First and Main, and then we would have staff drive by there at, whenever it's night, and go see if the streetlight's out. And then what we do, because we're not responsible to, to fix it, we put the pole number in, that's the other thing is, is, uh, we locate, find the pole number, and then we send it to Edison, and they, they come out with a technician to fix it.
Okay, just, just a response question to that, so, um, i- if anything, I know we're, we're looking at just a blank screen right now, or the, the logo, but is there any way we could pull that up for the public? I mean, I, I know it's kind of, you know, uh, reactive, but maybe for our next Plan Commission and/or city council, if they could show like, you know, IT could pull that up to see what you're talking about, and maybe if you can just, uh, reiterate what that app is called, so that way the public knows?
I just know it by that, but I know, I know IT did a whole presentation on it, uh, for council, uh, during a city council meeting before, so.
When was that?
I don't recall, but I know it, it's out there, and, and.
We do it again, just in case, you know?
Yeah, we can, it, it's on the city's website, if you go on the city website.
And it's on Channel Six as well, I know they did a video on how to download the app and how to use it as well.
Okay, all right, well, if we do it again, because I mean, it seems like Plan Commission, I've advocated to get these positions filled, and we haven't got one application, so it might take a little bit of, uh, repetitive, you know, um, you know, we don't have a public information officer either, so that doesn't help, but just to get it out there and, and just keep, you know, putting it out there so people know, but, um, yeah, so those, those two streetlights, um, so when you said it may or may not be the city's responsibility, how does that work? Because if they're on the sidewalk, is that, or is that going to be a Caltrans, or what, how does that fall in?
What I meant, I didn't say may or may not, we're not responsible to fix it, uh, like, the city crew's not going to go up there and change the light bulb or change the sensor on it, we contact Southern California Edison, who supplies those, and, and they actually come out and, and maintain those. So every street light in the city of Barstow is maintained, if it's on a street or a public right-of-way, it's maintained by Southern California Edison, and that's why there's a pole number usually attached to those lights. And all we do is we call our rep, uh, Tommy does, or we, we send it in, they have the same kind of similar thing where you can make complaints and stuff, um, and we send it into them, and they usually come out and take care of it.
Perfect, okay, perfect, okay, thank you, I didn't, I didn't know that, I thought those are city, city streetlights, but those are all Southwest Gas streetlights?
Well, they're city streetlights, but we, we.
Well, for the city, but maintained by South, South, yeah.
Exactly, so we, we have a franchise agreement with Edison, and, and they provide certain things, and so like, if somebody runs over a streetlight and knocks it down, Edison comes out, they safe it off, and then they actually go through the repair process.
Okay, and, and one other question too, I mean, this kind of brings up, uh, recollection.
Is this new, is this new information you're about to ask? Because you have six minutes.
No, 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 it's, it's pertaining to the same thing. But, um, so, so First Avenue Bridge, the new lights that are up there, I mean, they look good, they fit the whole aesthetics and everything, but I noticed, and I, I don't know if it's recently, but in the past, they were on throughout the whole day, they were on like 24/7, so have you guys made that, or?
So.
Is that, is that Southern California Edison too? Or is that?
It will be eventually, but right now, since the, the project hasn't completed, it's not signed off, it's still, it's the city of Barstow, but it's also, it's the contractor that's actually performing the work.
Okay.
So the reason why they're on 24/7 is because at first, they run through this testing mechanism to, to test the lights, but then also what's happened is they didn't order the photocell, is on back order for those lights, so that's why they're on 24/7. Once they get the photocell installed, then the lights will come on and off at dusk and go off in dawn.
Okay, all right, cool, that's all I got, so, thank you.
And Commissioner Brandt, um, Commissioner Lent, go ahead, please.
Question about bus stops, had a constituent ask me about that recently, there's a number in her area that were, are brand new, how is, is that established by the bus company or by the city?
So it's, it's established by VVTA, and we had two council members ask us at the last council meeting as well about this. Unfortunately, sometimes people don't recall, but the meeting prior to that, uh, so two meeting, two council meetings ago, um, VVTA representatives came to the city council, and they gave a presentation on how and why, and they showed all the maps of exactly where the bus stops were going, and they gave a presentation to the council, um, so I believe that, so that was in October, use it, the September, the September meeting, I think.
Yeah, the last, I think it was the second meeting in September, VVTA came out and did a presentation, um, they explained why the routes were added, some were deleted, it was because of usage, and I think they found that there was a need, um, in those areas where they created those new stops.
So it's all driven by VVTA, it's the city of Barstow, we don't collect data, and we don't do any of that, they ask us for our participation to install signs and, and bus stops, like shade structures, but that's, that's all we do.
So if a neighborhood wanted to, um, communicate with somebody about that, they would go to VVTA?
Correct.
Perfect. Um, the other thing is, in addition to the trunk or treat here at the city, I know that there are a number of others that are happening on Halloween night, one at Shepherd of the Desert Church as well, on Mountain View, so, that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Lent. Okay, anything further? No? Any last remaining staff comments? No, good to go? Okay, that being said, we'll go ahead and bring this meeting closed, thank you, everybody.